Following the Oregon City City Commission Work Session to order, it is September 8th, 2020. Please call the roll. Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Present.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Here.
And Commissioner President Rachel Lyles Smith?
Here.
And Mayor Dan Holliday is absent this evening. Thank you. So our first item up is a list of future work session agenda items. Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Commissioner. So we've included the running list as well as what we anticipate to bring forward in October at that work session. We'd also, they'll also have a couple of executive sessions coming as well that we anticipate in the near future. So some of this will get pushed out a little bit as we try to accommodate work sessions as well as executive sessions that we have coming forward.
Question for Mr. Conkle. Looking at this list, is there any low hanging fruit that we could remove from there? I mean, not remove, but address it earlier and, you know, abandoned buildings and...
That one's a simple one.
Yeah, I mean, there's some marijuana tax and funds. That's been bantered about a number of times. I don't want to take just the easiest. I just want to try to reduce this list for the future. So maybe we have an option if we, maybe if there's time left in any session, we could pick from the additional menu.
Well...
How much preparation time do you need for some of those is the question? Anyhow, it's a suggestion.
Yeah.
You can...
I agree with you.
So would it be helpful for the commission to reprioritize and rerank? We've done this exercise once already and we've added things, we've crossed off things.
Yeah. If we do it, let's not do it the way we did it before.
No. What about the idea of just taking one that we think could be dispensed with quickly? And we each have one. I don't want to go through and rank them again.
That sounds good to me. I mean, I look at some of them, it's like, do you really want to increase the parking rate for permitted at this point in time?
Yeah, no.
You know, I can answer that tonight.
Do we increase, what was that?
The parking rate increase for permitted parking in downtown.
Turn the page, it's on the backside.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the parks.
Not parks, parking.
Settle down.
I'm not sure.
But I mean, there is a policy discussion associated with that because we do have a parking plan that's been put in place as part of our transportation and management. And then, you know, and when you start to look at the competitive of our rates versus private lots, I mean, so that's why some of these are on here that do require some discussion around these.
That the city needs to have us have a discussion. So I think to get at what Commissioner O'Donnell is asking, Mr. Conkle, if you and your staff can look at this list, if there are any low hanging or little things that you think that we've added to this list or things that maybe could be taken off the list. But obviously, if there are things that the city needs, then to be on the list, then we can't remove, we probably shouldn't remove them.
Yeah.
Well, Madam Chair, I want to add something too. I want to put something out for discussion. I'm free.
I'm okay with hearing it.
Yes, go ahead.
If you'd like.
I would like the commission to consider the addition. I've been in contact with another jurisdiction. I'm concerned about the amount that we pay in legal fees and our expenditures. And maybe at some future point, we can have a discussion about should we have an in-house attorney for the routine business of running a city and still go outside for others. And I've spoken to another mayor about what he, what their expenditures were and how they saved and how they managed it. And I've looked at the numbers that we have spent over the years and I think it's a valid, and both Commissioner Lyles Smith and I have looked at it. I went a step further and engaged another mayor who had in-house counsel and subbed out the specialty stuff. I think that's a discussion worth revisiting, only with the concurrence of my other commissioners. I still struggle, and I'll be honest, Mr. Conkle, I struggle over the time that we didn't hear for months on end because of the reporting structure where the attorney reports strictly to the city manager. Had I been aware that we could have potentially put off annexations pending the court decisions, I would have moved on that way before we did. And when we finally became aware of it, we moved on it. And for that reason, I struggle with the reporting structure. I don't want to necessarily totally move it over to reports the entire commission. Maybe it's some kind of joint report. And I think that's another discussion I'd like to have. And I know it's been visited before and unvisited, but you know, in industry, there's a thing called five whys. It's like, why do we do this? And maybe you have to ask five times until you get to the right answer. So that's, those are two points I would actually like to discuss in the future. And they're big and they don't, they're not add-ons as far as, yeah, let's just do this too. No, it's, it's big.
Well, too, there are a couple of items on here along with that particular suggestion that may need to have a conversation before our budget. That could affect our budget process starting in the new year. And so, you know, I, I look at this list and I assume that, that the city manager and staff are prioritizing appropriately, partially weighing when items are ready to present to us. And at the same time, you know, juggling a whole bunch of other things to try to come up with this prioritization list. But I, one thing is for sure is I want to get to budget season, this, you know, in six months. And I want to feel like we've tackled some of the things that affect the questions that come up in budget. The marijuana tax funds and how we distribute things to nonprofits that came up at our last budget, the time when we were having a budget discussions for this biennium. We said we didn't have a policy on it and we couldn't address it. And so now, I fear that we'll be right back in that same position if we don't tackle some of the things, knowing that budget's coming. And so, Mr. Conkle, is there, is this another thing? Because the legal fees and that particular item, that is a big budget item. And therefore, of course, you know that I've, I've looked into this the same as you have, and it is a concern. But if we put it on here, it has a timing thing of needing to tackle it. And there's a short time period, I recognize, between now and budget season. I'm just wondering.
Commissioner Lyles Smith, could you just very, since I probably have the same ones you do, but could you just identify which items you think are priority in terms of budget? Because I agree with you. Frankly, I'm not, I would like to boot the pre-application request for recording follow-up. I don't think that's a high priority. And I think the budget stuff is more important. And I really want to make sure that we address those budget critical items. Like you say, they could affect the budget. And I don't want us to be caught, you know, shorthanded if we haven't really addressed that. So you mentioned the construction excise tax. Was that one of them? The marijuana tax?
Yep. Construction excise tax, marijuana tax, policies for nonprofits.
What about park specialty event fees?
Possibly. Possibly.
Okay. I'll put a question mark next to that one.
Am I missing any? Mr. Conkle?
The parking rate one, obviously.
Did we not get a presentation already on water system risk and resiliency review? Weren't we talking about that recently in terms of rates and why and...
Yeah, but we would have to come back with that because we're focusing on the SDC component versus the rate component.
Yeah, okay.
At some point.
We've touched upon it.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, some of these are ongoing, I guess, you know, depending on how we, how we break them up. I think those were the ones that, I mean, when you think about affecting rates or, you know, the budgeting process. I'm not sure about the parking. I mean, that's really, I mean, in the grand scheme of whether we raise the rate or not, it's miniscule. It's already incorporated into the budget.
Big ticket items, I think is what we're focusing on.
Yeah.
I was just asking for anything that might affect budgeting is what my concern was, is that we could take a look at after we've identified those and said, okay, this is, this is here or this one's here as rises to a higher level.
Agreed. Well, I am supportive of having the legal fee versus hiring of our own attorney conversation.
I am too.
As long as city staff feel like they have the time to put that together. I mean, I think for the budget conversation, you know, if, if the staff can fit them in, they're, they're prioritizing for that on time because there's a budget calendar and it's what all can be done and everything else. So I guess the question is, is that a priority that we want to give back to staff to make sure that we're prepared for budget season and these couple of items that we've...
I would say so because I've got the spreadsheet in front of me, what our expenditures have been over the past three years. I mean, they have ranged from $823,000 and year-to-date, we're at $432 right now. Those are big ticket items. Is there, that's year-to-date.
This is just September. Yeah, I have, I have no problem. I concur.
Now, that's going to take some time to put together, I think. But I think it's a priority task, if I may say so.
Okay. Are there any conflicts with anything that we've said? I think you kind of, in general, you've had staff working on, I know the construction excise tax item you've told me has been kind of in development, working on that, but it wasn't. I don't know when it's on the schedule.
Yeah, I think it's just trying to, yeah, trying to fit things in, manage time more than anything as to what we can present. So we'll, we'll work on it. So we've identified the construction excise tax, whether we want to implement that or not, marijuana tax and how that's distributed, policies for nonprofits, and then attorney fees slash in-house versus consultant prior to the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I was just making the budget connection recently in my mind. So I guess I would encourage everybody to think about that to make sure that we are prepared and have everything we want leading into the budget season.
I will say in terms of the item on abandoned buildings, it's one that I asked to be put on there because one of them is now gone. The other one is still standing. And I don't know what the building code policies are about that, but we have a, we have a couple of buildings, well, more than a couple, in our community that have been abandoned for five years plus now. And I'd say that's plenty of time. They either need to get, you know, we need to notify the owner that they either need to remove them, fix them, or something because they're really, they're blighted. And I, and I'm concerned that they are a fire hazard.
I mean, I, I think overall, we've made good progress on our goals. I mean, at this point, you got to think we're heading into the last year of the biennium. And, you know, we had pretty hefty goals for this biennium. And, you know, we should probably all look at that and say, you know, what are, are there any priority items that, that we want to make sure we're tackling as we hoped we would at the start of this biennium? And I know Commissioner McGriff, you weren't here for that process, but, and I was new. So lucky for you guys, I was new to that and pretty quiet. I won't be so quiet this next time around. And I'm looking forward to the budget discussions. So I think I'm excited about it and I think it'll be good. But I want us to all feel prepared and, and just thinking about our goals and what we're trying to accomplish this biennium and trying to make us, make sure we're staying focused.
On that.
On getting some of these big things done that we wanted to get done as a city and then fill in the gaps with these, these things that we need to tackle. That's my rah-rah statement for this item. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Move on.
I totally agree with you.
All right. Let's move on to discussion items. Number two, Oregon City Original Art Mural. Mr. Graham?
Madam President, members of the commission, Mr. City Manager, ladies and gentlemen, I'm James Graham, Economic Development Manager, City of Oregon, Oregon City. And today, well, murals, murals have been discussed in this community for many years. And a lot of people have been engaged in those discussions along the way. And, and when I came on board, I had promised this mission that tourism would be, we would be in an implementation stage because the plan had been on the shelf for two years. And we are implementing our plan. Now, during the tourism stakeholder meetings, we discussed murals as well. And so therefore, we're excited about the prospect of actually implementing a mural code policy for this city. With the indulgence of the commission, I'd like to bring forth Laura Turway to discuss the draft, the existing draft mural code. It's been a while. And she'll provide an overview. And then also with the commission's indulgence, we'll bring forth a couple of other speakers as well. So with that, I will ask Laura Turway to come forward.
Thank you. Madam President, while she is coming up, I just wanted to ask Mr. Graham a clarifying question. So I'm looking at this as re-implementation of the murals code because we had something in place prior and it lapsed. We had a mural, as you know, a mural group that met. I was also part of that process. So to me, this is updating and redoing.
Well, my understanding, we had a draft mural.
Well, we did, but we implemented it. We implemented it in a different way back in the day.
I think Ms. Turway is going to cover all that.
He's going to explain all that.
Yeah.
Good evening. Laura Turway, Community Development Director for the City of Oregon City. So I'm here just to provide a very brief highlight of some of those code amendments.
As you know, we met with the community back in 2014-ish and decided to revise all of our codes as they relate to signage. And one component of that, which was never adopted, or some standards on murals. So I'm just going to give you a highlight on what those mural standards are. Oops. You can't talk about signs or murals without defining what a mural is. And so it's basically a wall sign that is an original artwork that's either painted or tile or metal or some type of thing that's by hand put directly onto a building. And it is also something that's approved through this code if this gets codified. Murals are content neutral. So in the state of Oregon, we cannot regulate signage of what a sign says. We can just regulate the size of a sign, the material, the location, the height, that kind of thing. So when we're thinking about murals and what those regulations for murals look like, the idea is to review it as if there's butcher paper over a sign. So the city should be the same amount of acceptance for a sign that says, I love Oregon City, as opposed to, I don't know why you would ever say it, but you didn't like Oregon City. So content neutral, state of Oregon, it's part of our protections of free speech. City cannot regulate what it says. All right. So the group that got together identified some criteria on the screen. I'm not going to make you read them all. There is criteria. Since we cannot regulate content, what the general gist of the standards and the process is to make sure that we have components in place that we can regulate. So one of the criteria is that there's no compensation given or received. We have a definition of compensation, which includes bartering and other things like that, that the mural has to be on place for at least five years. Some of the large concerns were that we would have advertisement and advertisement would be less likely if it was that stable. Another regulation is that once the mural is complete, there is an easement that gets, goes to the city. So it's a city easement on the wall of a building. And within that easement language, it compels the applicant to maintain the easement as well and to keep it perfect until that five years is up or whatever the deadline is. And there's some more logistical criteria, like you shouldn't cover any windows and doors and things like that. So of all the criteria in the code, for the most part, it is ready to go. There's some, probably some nips and tucks, like it talks about not going on a single-family residence or duplex or multifamily. Well, since then, we now have three and fourplexes of things. So there's some little tweaks we'd want to take a look at. But for the most part, pretty good to go. The review process for a mural includes approval by the Arts Commission. It's probably been a while since any of us have said that. I refresh my memory by making sure that it is a group that is codified in chapter two of our code. They just haven't met for quite some time. So the idea again is to have a public review process for the murals. But again, knowing you can't regulate content itself, you're adding a little bit more process. So maybe we're reading out some of those advertisements. That decision by the Arts Commission is appealable to the city commission. And if the commission didn't want to bring back an arts commission, which may not meet that frequently, just to review a mural, you could replace that with like planning commission if they're not in session or something like that. So there's some options there if you'd like. One other side piece with the draft mural code is there are two historic review board policies that were also created. And the idea there was to say that when you're in a historic district, it shouldn't have to go to the Arts Commission and to the Historic Review Board. There should be a nice, easy way for staff to review this historic component. And so it included some criteria like don't be on the front of the building and that sort of thing. So if the commission directs staff to look at this, I would recommend going back to the Historic Review Board, looking at those criteria, making sure that they're great. And the Historic Review Board is on board with what those say. There was another one related to maintenance too. But again, since this draft was done, we updated the Historic Review Board policies as well. It's a little bit less concerning. But really having a new Historic Review Board policy that acknowledges that they can be approved by staff if these very specific criteria are met is a good thing as far as reducing the bureaucracy of murals. The mural code was not adopted. And I just wanted to spend one second to explain a little bit about the context back then. Back then, we technically didn't allow any signs in the right of way. We completely rewrote all of our code. It was, everything was very new and very different. And my interpretation of what their city commission was at at that point was there is a lot of risk happening here. We, you can have, every property can have A-frame signs and you can have the signs that hang on the light posts. And we have cross-street banners. There could be signs all over the place. What is our risk assessment of how many people put up signs that say, I don't like Oregon City, or there's too much signs and it's too cluttery? This is just too much change all at once to implement that whole package? Because the standards themselves and the whole sign code were different. And we also opened ourselves to allow signage where we didn't before. So that's my assessment of why it wasn't adopted in the first place. So now it's been a little bit of time. So we've got a chance to reflect the last few years on how it's actually played out. So a little bit more comfort today than we probably had a little bit before. That is all I have as far as the summary of the code. Any questions?
I guess my, Madam President, may I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner McGriff.
I'm a little concerned about the inconsistency. So if we're going to reconstitute the Arts Commission and have them review the murals, then I don't think it's appropriate that you just have a staff review. I think it's more appropriate that if we do have qualified people on this Arts Commission, that they should review all the murals. And I, I'm pretty sure that many of the people who might even be considered to be appointed to this know a lot about the history of Oregon City. So I'm not particularly worried about that. And I would like to not have two different types of processes depending on, it should just be, it's either the Arts Commission is going to review it and maybe as far as Historic Review Board, maybe they'll make a recommendation to the HRB, say, yeah, we think this looks great. And then it's, you know, it gets rubber stamped or whatever you want to call it. But I, it's got to be consistent. And that's what I see this not consistent.
I love your comment because I 100% agree. And that's where the HRB policy allowed staff to review it to make sure it was in compliance with the design guidelines. So there wouldn't have to be a second review. So if that played out, Kelly would take a look at the mural, say, yes, this met these very specific HRB policies, and then put that in the application for the Arts Commission. So they could go together and you wouldn't have all these.
That sounds fine. That wasn't real clear. And I thought that's what you meant, but I thought I'd ask the question to make it clear.
Then you don't have a double appeal and all these things.
Right. I think when we, when this review of whether we wanted to include murals as signs, I think I was probably the lone planning commissioner that voted against the sign code because I thought murals needed to be exempted because I didn't think they needed to go through the same type of process. I, I know that we have the law of unintended consequences and that's how I tend to think about things. Well, what's the worst thing that could possibly happen? I'm going to put a lot of faith in the process and hopefully there won't be people coming in and saying that they want a sign that says, I hate Oregon City or whatever, something that would be detracting. But I look at these murals as being a part of not only the tourism strategy, but a part of the story that Oregon City has to tell in terms of its, its background, its, its history. I remember when we did, the one was done on the Elks Lodge. And how many people didn't know Joe Meek was one of our first sheriffs here in Clackamas County? That was when we were, we were it all. We were Oregon City and all the environs around it. So he was the, one of the first sheriffs after William Holmes. So I looked at it also as an educational component, that people went, huh, I didn't know that. And it made them think a little more. And maybe it made them research something a little more or look something up now that we all have Google. So I see that, you know, the history part of it as being very, very positive and beneficial to our city.
Commissioner Smith?
So I agree with the comments about the process. And I really do think we need to have an Arts Commission. I was a founding member of the Arts Commission and think we need to have that back. And it was way broader than just this topic. There was a percent for arts tax that we were working on that never got implemented, a lot of things. And that, you know, unfortunately, we missed the boat on that because that was really about how to have a percentage of our city projects, like City Hall or Public Works or the library have an art component. We've done that, you know, still with the library, but that was never fully implemented. So I would really love to see a conversation to get the Arts Commission back and how, how that process would go. I think your memory about the, why we ended up where we were is exactly right. We let the banners go. about the, why we ended up where we were is exactly right. We let the banners go, and it was like, okay, let's see if we allow banners to go up all around the city on the light posts, if anything questionable pops up. But were we really willing to let that happen to every building in the city at the time? It was like, oh, my gosh. But look what has happened. We haven't had any issues, it seems, with banners being put up around the city that are questionable. And that could be because the public doesn't know they can. But that was a worry. And I think it still could be a worry with the murals. And there's other things that can worry me a little bit, too, as being part of that discussion originally. There's a piece here that talks about covering windows, doors, things like that. What is the reasoning for that?
We wanted to make sure that, that there's still transparency. Under the Development Code, we have transparency requirements. So we didn't, we want to make sure that the community can still interact with the people on the other side of those windows and businesses and doors.
The problem is, they can put it on the inside of the windows, and we can't do anything about it.
True.
So having it on the outside of the window, or the inside of the window, completely covers the window, they just move it inside. And it's perfectly, and you've seen, actually, you see businesses down, even the shopping center, where whole storefronts are being, you know, kind of covered with, you know, murals, or, or, or images. And so I think, you know, that's one of those things that they can, there's ways to get around all those things. And so we have to be thinking, if we're, if we're, you know, putting those kind of restrictions in to do something, and there's still another way to do it, we need to be careful about that, because it's still, people will find a way around it.
Are you talking about things like wraps, like they do with cars?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Ross has that, has that all across the front of their storefront.
They've wrapped the whole front edge of the store. So any business could do that. If they put the vinyl on the outside of the window, in this version, it would be considered a mural. If they put the wrap on the inside, it's inside the interior of the building, and we can't touch it, in terms of restrictions. So I think that's something we need, you know, concerned about. Let's see. I think that's about it. I'm excited to have this back, you know. I think, you know, part of Oregon City's identity, to some degree, has been lost with the murals that we lost. And I think we could have, unfortunately, I think we lost murals over that gap period that we shouldn't have lost. And I hope that the city wasn't involved in, in kind of encouraging some of those to go away. But we need to work on how we can get those back, and, and bring kind of, you know, an interesting identity back to downtown. There's plenty of walls and areas that need it, or need some sort of visual help. So I'm excited about this.
Commissioner Graham, or Commissioner, Mr. Graham, you said you had other people to present on this topic. Triest Andrews, from the Three Rivers Artist Guild is next.
And real quick, before you leave, Ms. Triest, so are you planning to, to adjust the draft code, whereas calling out single-family dwellings, duplexes, yada, 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 is that, are you thinking that's going to change to more of a zone, where murals are allowed in specific zones within the city?
That one's more technical in nature. We could just say, not on a residential property, but mixed use is okay. There's language in there that says mixed use is okay, rather than say the specific types of residential, we could just say residential generally. Or we can add in three and fourplexes, or like...
So your proposal is that, so your proposal is that murals are essentially allowed anywhere in the city?
That's what this draft says, yeah. They're allowed anywhere in the city. The Commission definitely has options to limit locations. We have a downtown design district. You can fix zoning designations if you wanted to take incremental steps.
Yeah, so I would be in favor of taking incremental steps. We currently do manage where banners are allowed in the city, in specific zones, and it's on on specific streets. So I have other concerns, but I'll save them till after we hear from others.
I'll simply say, I think it's a project worthy of pursuing. I think we worked through the details. If you read the report, and I've done a lot of tourism travel in my life, I've been to places that were defined by their murals. It gave the place a flavor. It identifies the community. Much of what this report says is right on. It fosters community identity, creates a sense of place, enhances tourism. And it says arts tourism is the fourth largest driver of tourism. I mean, those places where I've been, where tasteful murals existed, and I still think, the loss of the one at the corner of 99 in Maine, that was a historical treasure to me, and it's gone. And if there's a way to restore that, I would be the first person to say yay. So that's my thoughts on it.
So I'll go ahead and say what my concerns are, then. I, I think it's a great idea. I would love, and I, I wonder if those cities, because I've been to some cities, and I've seen murals under bridges, that I thought were really tastefully done, really pretty art. And I'm wondering if the city is sponsoring or paying for specific designs to ensure that they're tasteful, and not anything that would turn off others, to make sure that there's balance. My concern, and I'll, I'll just be blunt, is in the political environment that we're at right now, that there would be folks that do not at all care about that five-year requirement to be there. And everybody is pushed to the ends of the spectrums, and, and they don't care. People don't care about offending other people. And I'm just really concerned that someone would put something up, and, and it would be offensive to half of the city, and we would have no control. And that comes out of that content thing. And so there may have been concerns in 2015 that were one area. This is, that, this is my area of concern right now, today, when I look at the current political environment and where we're at, and not having any control over that. So, you know, I'll just put it out there. I don't know, I understand First Amendment and all that. And so I just wonder if there was a way that the city could have more control to ensure, like, I want them there, but I, I would just love to be able to ensure that we get really tasteful products that are, support our tourism, and support our downtown, and support our history, and, and, and all of that, so.
I agree with all that. And this is a sensitive area today. And I even have to think of what you could call sins of omission. Why was my group not represented on any murals? So besides offending somebody with content, lack of content could also be offensive.
Right, right. You have one side, why not the other side?
Yeah, so it's going to be...
So we'll see where we get.
But it's still worth pursuing.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Ms. Triest. Oh, sorry.
So on the murals that are on existing homes, once this went into effect, what happens to those?
So...
Are they grandfathered in, or do we make them paint it their house?
Yes, that is a great question.
There's murals on houses in Oregon City.
In the sign code, when we adopted it, we created a list of all the existing commercial murals. So all painted, he was more specific. It was all painted wall signs that were in place by, I think it was January 1st, 2015. We took pictures of, and catalogued, and specifically exempted them.
Okay, I think I remember that conversation.
So there are the last picture I showed, where it's all the murals. Those ones are the ones that are specifically exempted. They can go on forever and stay. We, since the code didn't allow murals, we wanted to make sure that we preserved them in some way. So that's why there's one for like, the pool sign at Nelson's Nautilus, and there's a couple of business for City Cycles, some other things. We just took every wall sign and commercial area that was bigger than the wall signage was allowed.
Because I know some others, and I just don't know if they were pre-2015, or after that, or either, but...
Yeah, I don't know. I did not hear that we missed any in 2015, but it's possible.
Okay, spill it. No, I'm not saying we're, I just, I know they exist.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Graham.
Well, since you mentioned First City Cycle, since it doesn't really exist anymore, I mean, is that something we're going to keep forever and ever as pre-existing?
It's gone.
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
The list lives forever, but the sign does not.
So I, just as a clarification, I understand that in the trading back and forth of the building that the Hopp family owned, and the mural that was there, it was painted on a...
The other side.
Yeah, on the other side. And it's on some wood or something, so that it could be removed, in case it needed to be replaced.
In case the building was there.
Right, okay, perfect.
So we didn't include it, because it wasn't painted on the building.
You didn't?
No, no.
Well, it was painted on the building, and then they moved it to the other side and painted it...
Once it got moved, now it's just a sign. The list of existing murals was painted.
Okay, well, I think you need to add that one to the list.
The concern, I'm, sorry, it's a slight tangent, but in this mural code, it talks about being adhered directly to the building. And back in 2015, that's where the building wraps got big, or the vinyl, people would print basically a billboard on vinyl, reproduce it for Nike, or whatever, and slap it up on the building. And so this has provisions not to do that. So it really wants it attached to the building uniquely, piece by piece.
One of the billboards on Seventh by Mike's is, is getting blown off right now. I mean, it's in the process of sort of peeling its way off the, off the sign, due to the wind.
Okay, let's move on for time.
Well, Astrid Andrews come up, just wanted to say that this is also, today, this is also part of the Treasure Trove project, under the implementation of the Tourism Plan. So I'm glad, I'm glad you recognize that art is both a tourist attraction, as well as an economic development strategy. So I'm very pleased that, that one day we will see murals in Oregon City. Please, I'll introduce you now, Triest Andrews, who has also been a part of our stakeholders, Tourism Stakeholder Table.
Okay, please introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone else, please. I'm Victoria Minig. I'm the CEO of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce and a community member. I'm here in support of art in our city, but specifically this evening for murals. So about a year ago, Triest Andrews of the, of the Three Rivers Artist Guild approached me when she was gathering community support for a mural project. I was surprised at the time to find out that the mural program no longer existed back when I, that had been here when I had worked here 20 years ago. And to find out that it was gone, and that the murals had been neglected, and that some had been painted over, was quite a shock. I believe murals tell stories. They can show you who we are, where we've been, and where we're going. They add beauty, culture, and depth to our already appealing and well-maintained city. They attract visitors and engage those who would come to see and learn about what we have to offer here in the city. Touring the multiple locations could extend a visit, and they could bring some much-needed commerce to many of our businesses. So anyone who has worked with Triest knows that her enthusiasm and her creativity is infectious. With her passion for the arts and her record of producing significant events, I believe she will do an outstanding job at this project's helm. I'm asking you today to please support the arts, and to change the code to allow per murals. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews, Artist Guild?
Hi, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to come in on a work discussion, to be able to talk a little bit about murals, and hopefully reinstate mural codes, so we can again have codes of murals in Oregon City, as before. Everything that I will say tonight, I am leaving a binder behind me. So there, I've already given electronically all of our support letters, and some statistics on it. But anything I give you tonight, this will be left behind for you, in a hard copy. More than 20 years ago, Oregon City had a vibrant public arts program in place. In addition to established resolutions, policies, and guidelines, there was an art commission set up, and even in a one, one and one-third percentage of capital projects proposed to the city for the support of the arts. Much of the public arts programs were focused on murals throughout Oregon City, and from 1992 to 1995, eight murals were created. Several of the murals were actually created in a single day, with bleachers set up, so that the public could observe. A brochure depicting the citywide murals was published and distributed in 2010. I have those in this binder. And supported by the Clackamas County Cultural Coalition, the Oregon Cultural Trust, Oregon City 150, Lead the Legacy Task Force, IQ Graphics, and Main Street Oregon City. All murals depicted historical moments in Oregon City. They were professionally painted, and were welcomed and admired by the public. There were no instances of offensive content, either proposed or created. Although I'm not completely familiar, although I am a little bit more tonight, with how or why the city of Oregon City started to change their view of murals. But in 2015, it was determined that it was in the city's best interest to restrict the creation of public murals in Oregon City. Public murals were placed under the category of signage, which is restricted by size, and so public murals could no longer be created. As shown by the tremendous support and success of murals in the past, and the overwhelming support we've received over just the past three months, to have murals reinstated, I believe it is in the best interest of Oregon City to bring back murals to our city. We have collected over 100 signatures of support, all in this binder, 19 of which were given by people who would actually like a mural at their place of business, also included here. We all know that murals can be and are aesthetically beautiful. They can lend to the ambiance and attractiveness of a city. However, more importantly, murals and public art pieces are a tremendous tool that can support a city's economy. Practically every major city in the US has a program in place for murals. Philadelphia, a city of over 1.5 million people, has based its reputation on being the mural capital of the world. And if you've never been there before, it's astounding. Miles of giant murals throughout a city that will literally take your breath away. And away in the 1980s, that Philadelphia was able to recover from a harsh recession. Smaller cities, more local to us, like Estacada, Silverton, the Dalles, with populations only between 3, 3,500 and 13,000, also use murals as a way to promote tourism and their economy, and they've been successful doing so. An article written in City Speaks in 2017 by Jay Dick state eight different ways how murals can support an economy. These include: public safety, infrastructure, budgets, housing, education, energy and environment, health, and demographics. That article is included in this binder, and it's well worth reading. More recent article in the New York Times, also included in the binder, was published in May of this year, and was written by Hillary Sheets. It explains how murals send a message of hope in a grim time, and how much do we need that right now. My understanding is that Oregon City sees the new creation of murals because of possible liability issues. But I don't believe that ultimately restricting them was beneficial to Oregon City's economy, or in accordance with the greater public's wishes. In researching different cities' processes for murals, there are ways to safeguard mural content without discontinuing their installation. Options such as an ad hoc mural committee to review murals, possibly giving the city ownership of the murals, and requirements for permits are all being studied at this time. It is something I believe we can work together on for everyone's comfort level. I'd like to end this presentation and lapse into something a little bit more philosophical. I am an artist. I believe artistic expression is the very essence of who we are as human beings. Creating art is a mystical paradox of reaching within, and at the same time, reaching beyond ourselves, to create something unique and meaningful. There is not one person here tonight who has not had a life-changing moment, reading a book, a poem, gazing at a painting, admiring a sculpture, or even tasting the best thing that we've ever eaten. Art changes ourselves. It changes those around us. It changes our culture. It can change our world, and for the better. Yes, I believe in a public forum, we need a way to monitor art to ensure for inclusion. But I vehemently oppose a total censure of any form of art. We can find a way to do this together and support Oregon City. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any final comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner McGiff?
Yes, just one. In recent years, most of the jurisdictions in our particular region have raised their percentage from 1% to 2% for any public projects that they embark upon. And I would strongly suggest that we do that. Like Commissioner Smith said, the library had plenty of art within that, within that project. And I haven't seen any art yet for the Public Works Building, but I'm assuming some is going to be there. I think any project that we embark on, or we contract to, will have... I think any project that we embark on or we contract to will have art, but I think the 2% is basically what everybody else is using at this time.
So my memory is we never adopted that at all. We're just doing it, we've just done it.
Project by project, yes.
Because we felt it was a good thing to do, but it was never.
Never formalized.
I just want to make sure I was right on that. Thanks.
Do you have any other comments?
No, I, no, thank you. We can't vote on it, but we're supportive.
I think you have general consensus. Mr. Graham, would you like to come back up?
I have, I'm sorry if it's allowable. I have two other people with comments that came with me. Kevin Yell, who is the president of the Clackamas County Coalition, and also Linda Orzen, who was involved for 30 years, not only politically, but also with the arts programs for that many years, if we have time.
If they can keep their comments fairly brief, yes.
Okay.
Kind of said it all.
I believe they were both on the Arts Commission as well, at least at one point in time with me.
We still have two other hefty agenda item topics, so if they can limit their comments to, you know, our standard public comment time, that would be wonderful, a three minutes.
Let's move, folks.
Whichever one. Sorry, I don't have your names to call you up.
Linda.
Linda.
Well, you'll say it when you get up there, Linda.
Name and city for the record?
Linda Orzen, Oregon City. And, yes, we were on the Arts Commission together 25 years ago, I believe it was. I haven't been in the arts. I know, I know.
It can't possibly be that long.
We're getting old. I've worked with the arts community for the last 20 years, first joining the Arts Commission and later becoming one of the founding members of the Three Rivers Artist Guild, which now hosts about 120 active members. When I first learned of the current restrictions to murals in Oregon City, I was very upset and couldn't understand how the community would not want to maintain our visual heritage. But after reading the staff report for this work session, my hopes were restored that we could once again see beautiful pieces of artwork on our community buildings. Only 10 short years ago, we created a walking map of the murals to celebrate the Oregon City 150 Leave a Legacy project. Since that time, several of the murals have disappeared, and I've heard several people comment that we would like to see them back somehow, which I would be so pleased to see. The actual definition of a mural is a painting or other work of art that's executed directly on a wall. I was actually looking on the Internet for explanations for the need of murals throughout history and society and ran across this piece of information. Visual effects of murals entice, attract, and interpellate public attention to the history, culture, and social issues that are visually communicated. Murals bring art into the public sphere, and because they occupy public spaces, they are accessible to everyone regardless of class, education, or ethnicity. Murals create conversation and give information, expand thoughts, share ideas. Murals have been used throughout history, going back to cave paintings and later giant paintings of world events, conquest, exploration, and discovery. Mural projects are a popular form of public art that transforms outdoor spaces into public art galleries. I want to close by saying how honored I am to be here discussing the rebirth of our murals in Oregon City, to be among such distinguished members of the Oregon City Arts Committee, Artist Guild, the Chamber of Commerce, and Clackamas County Arts Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
No.
Thank you.
No. The gentlemen?
Madam President, Commissioners, and wonderful staff. My name's Kevin Yell. I'm here with three hats tonight. I do live in Oregon City, so as a resident, I would love to see more murals, or as they call them in England, murials. As a business owner at the Amesworth House, I do know that social media is more and more and more part of how life happens, whether we like it or not. In my own business, 70% we're now at, which is very hard for an old man like me. The thing about murals is that they get pictures. People love clicking, doing the selfie in front of art. And if part of our tourism and marketing plan is to get our name out there, then anything we can do to create places where people will take pictures of themselves or just of the beauty of the moment and put it on social media, that's going to hit us up over and over and over again. So a small expense creates a wonderful opportunity for marketing. So murals especially with the uniqueness. Finally, I'm here as the president of the Clackamas County Arts Alliance, and I'm delighted that you are considering re-establishing something like an Arts Commission. And anything we can do to help bring that about, we would be very happy to do so. More and more of the cities in the county are looking at creating something like that. And I would just say, with what's going to be happening at what was the Blue Heron site, and as Clackamas County continues to be a huge magnet for residential development, we cannot let art just happen in, or commerce, just happen in one little bit of the city. There has to be a plan, which is exactly what you're talking about, that will work so that we have smaller little groups at the Berry Hill and Hilltop, and as other places get developed, that we don't become a city that's got, all the attention is put down here in these, you know, two square miles, and the rest, well, it's just residential. So as an arts advocate with the alliance, I would invite you to re-establish that commission and just think of, as my colleagues were saying, how impactful the arts are in terms of creating livable spaces where people celebrate living in Oregon City just because it's a great place to live, but it's because it's beautiful, unique, and not just has a place in history, but has a place in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we are finished with this item. And the next item on the agenda, thank you, Mr. Graham.
Just have one more quick question. So the, Mr. City Manager, the impact to staff, is this going to be run out of the Community Development Department for the Arts Commission? Should we choose to vote on this at a later date? Or is it coming out of economic development? Where do you think this is going to land?
I haven't, I don't think I have an answer for you. I would think, because of the tourism relationship, would probably be active, but there is obviously a planning component to that.
Okay, all right, we'll get back. Thank you.
Okay, so the next item up is I-205 tolling, NIPA and Alternatives Analysis Comment Letter.
We were wondering if we could flip the order, because we have some consultants on the line for the water SDCs. We could maybe move them now.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I'm so excited to talk about I-205.
Yes, we can, we can change the agenda.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Talk about water system development, charge updates. Correct.
I'm going to take a.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
I'm going to take a break.
Yeah. Mr. Lewis, good to see you.
Does Ms. Webb need a spot? No?
Not for this one, yeah.
Okay.
Let's see, we've got Patty on, we've got Doug on, Doug Gabbert, and John Gilarducci, both from FCS Group. So the topic kind of speaks for itself. You know this topic. You will see some repetitive things, because we need to go through that, I think, for the listening public. But Patty's really put all this together with Doug and John, so I'm going to just hand it off to Patty, and she can take it from here. And I think her slide presentation has really got some good information in it, so if you could share that. Thank you for, by the way, thank you for taking the time to put this on your work session agenda, hearing from that first topic. And I know there's a lot of things that you'd like to hear. This is hopefully one of them, because we have been talking about water system and the water system needs for funding. So Patty, take it away.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Patty Nelson. Good evening, Commissioners. So this is just a follow-up from our July meeting, July work session. You gave prior direction that we could go ahead and proceed with SDCs ahead of the rate. So we thought we'd bring SCS group back and refresh you on the report that they did in 2019. I think I mentioned in the staff report, we're going to be doing some updates.
Ms. Nelson, can you, can you get a little closer to your audio? Or if you have headphones, you're kind of difficult to hear in here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
And I can't hear you.
Great, thanks.
It's going to be hard.
Oh, she can't hear us.
Great. Okay. Well, I'm just going to go ahead. You can hear me. So I'll start over. So, good evening. So I'm picking up from our discussion in July work session, where we talked about separating out the rates and the SDCs. And so SCS is here tonight to really present their findings that they presented to the Commission back in November of 2019, but focusing in on the SDC portion. The idea is to get a refresher to the Commission on what the SDCs will look like in terms of an update, have a dialogue in terms of how you want to move forward, proceed. One of the next steps in their presentation, we'll talk about it, will be to do a public notification. At the end of that 90 days, we'll have a public hearing and your testimony, and then we'd be voting to move forward with that SDC update. So we're just checking in tonight to make sure that we're all on board in terms of how we're moving forward. So with that, I'm going to move it over to John Giladucci.
Thank you, Patty. Good evening, Commissioners. I will slow walk it here while Doug shares his screen. We're going to introduce you to one more member of FCS Group, that's Wyatt Zimbleman. And it's appropriate that Doug and Wyatt are on the cover slide here and not me, because they did the heavy lifting associated with this, with this project. I'm seeing some controls there. Doug, you got it?
You got it.
Okay. We will go through, I'll go through a little bit of background and then turn it over to Wyatt and Doug to talk through the analytical results. And then we've got some regional comparatives to show you, comparables, and then talk about next steps. So by way of a, of a refresher, we're talking about system development charges here. The Oregon law allows us, system development charges to recover the costs of growth from growth. So unlike rates, these are the one-time charges paid at the time of development by new development or certain redevelopment. They help recover the cost of infrastructure, capital, and they can only be used to spend on capital construction. So these are not, not for operations. They do benefit rates in that they pay for capital that rates would normally have to pay for. They include two components, and I'll get to those in a minute. They are for general facilities. So it's not, this is not for the meter. This is for a share of storage capacity when you're talking about a water system. As I mentioned, we have a very solid legal framework. We follow that law in ORS 223, 297 through 314. There's also quite a bit of case law out there that we, that we know well and incorporate into our work, and we're very familiar with best practices around the state. So we apply all that, being very careful to stay within the legal constraints to calculate system development charges. The calculation framework, which we will go through with actual numbers in a minute, I mentioned two components. The reimbursement fee is a buy-in to existing unused capacity in the system that's available for new users, new development to use. And that calculation, first, we have to isolate that unused capacity in the existing system, if there is any, and what that cost is. And then we divide it by the growth in system demand that will be served by that capacity, and that gives us our reimbursement fee. That's a smaller, the smaller of the two fees this time. The improvement fee, the larger of the two, in this case, is based on the long list of planned capital projects. And we isolate from that list the cost of capacity increasing projects which will serve growth or future users, and the sum total of those capacity increasing costs, again, divided by the growth that they will serve, gives us our improvement fee. Together, that is a system development charge. It's intended to represent the share of infrastructure capacity that will serve each increment of growth. Some of it's already been built, that's in the reimbursement fee, and some of it is yet to be built, and that's in the improvement fee.
So John's kind of covered the background of an SDC. I'm going to walk through the main analytical steps that we took in getting to the actual SDC. And so the first step is you have to figure out what our growth in system capacity is. And that's going to be the denominator for both the reimbursement and the improvement fee. So we have to determine what unit we're going to base this growth around. And for a water utility, that's going to be the meter capacity equivalent, or MCE. And what that is, basically a series of factors that we use that basically tell you how much water, basically the flow rate of water through different meter sizes so that we can charge larger meter-sized customers for larger, a higher SDC. And so basically what we do is we take a look at your existing customer base, and we have provided from the city some detailed customer billing statistics. And we apply, you know, basically you have a ledger of number of accounts by different meter sizes. We take the MCE factor and then multiply it by that, and that gives us a count of your total MCEs in your existing system. And the next step is to take that and project that out into the future and figure out what's our future demand in MCEs. And the key thing here is that whatever, you know, demand horizon we look at, it has to match with projects that are in your improvement fee. And so once we've identified what our future MCE demand is, we subtract the current MCEs, and that gives us our growth in system capacity. This next slide is going to kind of show the, you know, analytical breakdown of how we did that. We don't have from your planning documents a forecast of MCEs, but we do have a forecast of water demand, and we make the assumption that, you know, growth in water demand is going to be mirrored by growth in MCEs. So, you know, using some benchmarks from '15 and '20, we were able to estimate at the time, 2019 average state demand. And that growth from 3.8 million gallons per day to 5.2 million gallons per day in 2040, we take that same growth and apply that to your meter capacity equivalent count of just about 15,000, 15,500, and that comes out to about 21,000 in 2040. And that difference from 2019 to 2040, that's the growth in system demand that we'll use as the denominator for the improvement of the reimbursement fee. And the next piece we have is the reimbursement fee cost basis. What that is, it's trying to get to the eligible value of unused capacity in existing facilities. So if you take this pie, this pie chart, and that's the total water system, but we're looking forward to that slice, and that's the share of the existing water system which has available capacity for future users. And the way we get to that, in the next slide, is we basically start with a ledger of your system's fixed assets, and we have the original cost of those assets. We take out any costs that are, that were paid for by developers or grants, anything the city didn't pay for, because ultimately, we can't include anything on a charge that the city didn't, that the city didn't pay for. Once we know, you know, once we have that, you know, net of contribution, original cost, we organize your assets by function. So things like storage, distribution, transmission, and we look at, you know, based on planning documents that we have, we look at, okay, can we find any available capacity for future users in these different functions? For Oregon City, we're able to find some available capacity in storage assets, about 39%. And then we also allocate a share of general plant assets, and that's things that couldn't be directly assigned to a specific function like pumping or storage. And we allocate a share of the available capacity from all other assets to the general plant. So combining those two categories of asset, we get a total reimbursement fee of just over $6 million in eligible costs. Now, the next step is the improvement fee, and that's the eligible cost of planned capacity increasing facility. So similar calculation to the reimbursement fee, but now we're looking at. So similar calculation to the reimbursement fee, but now we're looking at future costs, future capital projects. And that pie in this situation is the full CIP. And then what we're looking for in the slice is the portion of those projects that will provide additional capacity for future users of the system. Now, to calculate that, we take a look at your total capital project list, and we evaluate, work with the city, work with engineering consultants, and we work on what's the percentage of each one of these projects that provides capacity for future users. For some projects, that's nothing; for some, that's the whole cost of the project; and for others, there's a certain percentage that's eligible for the SDC. So of your $82 million in capital projects, the 92 projects, we were able to identify just under 52 million that's in total eligible projects, so about 63%. And that number, the 52 million number, becomes the improvement fee cost basis.
So now that Wyatt has done the difficult work, I will do the easy part of putting everything together and showing you the climactic result. So we begin with the reimbursement fee with the cost basis that you've already seen of just over $6 million. From that, we deduct your current reimbursement fee cost, unspent fund balance of just over $1 million to get a net cost basis of just over $5 million. You divide that out by the number of MCEs that Wyatt described earlier, and that comes to $870 per meter capacity equivalent. Same math with the improvement fee. A total gross cost basis of almost $52 million. We're going to go ahead and deduct that fund balance, once again, of nearly $3 million to give you a net cost basis of about $49 million. We're going to divide out by the meter capacity equivalents, and that's going to be $8,505 per meter capacity equivalent. So you add up reimbursement fee and the improvement fee together, the total gets you $9,374 per meter capacity equivalent. You then use those flow factors that Wyatt was describing earlier to expand this out into a full fee schedule. The base MCE is a 5/8 by 3/4 meter, and you use the flow factors provided by the American Waterworks Association to get the full schedule. And you see here, each meter size is compared with your existing SDC. You see here a comparison with other jurisdictions. This is the one thing that may look a little different from what you saw in your report because when we put this together for presentation, we decided to update everything. And so I would say what you are looking at now supersedes what you see in the report. This is the most recent data. But you'll see that the relative position of everything is not significantly changed. It really is the same story. Your current SDC, your current water SDC, when combined with the South Fork SDC, this is a total water SDC basis to make everything apples to apples, kind of puts you mid-pack and implementing the full calculated SDC, which you are not required to do. But if you did, that would put you close to the top at $11,724 total SDC, including South Fork. So Patty already alluded to the next steps. They are to set a public hearing at least 90 days in advance to provide the statutory 90-day notice to interested folks. And once you provide that notice, you make the report available during the last 60 days of the notice period, and that report will look a whole lot like the SDC portion of the report that you've already received, except we'll put that updated comparison in that new version. And we'll make that available to the public during the last 60 days of the notice period. And then the city council can, or the city commission can receive information and discuss the SDCs before the public hearing. It's just that you're prohibited from taking any official action. And with that, we would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
That somehow reminded me of being in engineering school when they called it plugging and chugging, putting numbers in and plugging and chugging. Let me ask something. Please go back to Slide 12. My question on this, is there any legal constraints? What this slide doesn't have is a frequency of occurrence. So when I looked up, it seems like for single-family residents, 3/4 inch meters are the go-to size. And my question is, you know, I don't want this community to be a bedroom community. I want it to bring industry here. So to be quite honest, Mr. John Lewis, our Public Works Director, and I had an interesting conversation the other night, friendly conversation. And my question has become, across the board, you've applied the same multiplier from the smallest to the largest, 2.16 in round numbers. Is there anything that prevents us from weighting one size higher or lower than the other based on frequency? And I say that because we know from SDCs that single-family residences do not pay their way. And we also know that we're trying to attract businesses here. So could we potentially lessen the multiplier? And I don't even know how, I don't know at what point you enter into industrial-sized meters. But if we were trying to encourage industry to come here, would it behoove us to maybe apply a number less than that 2.16 above a certain meter size? Recognizing that not every--
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead, sir. No, that's quite all right. You first, please.
Well, I'm curious, is that, have you ever seen that practice in your experience? And does the law prohibit applying different multipliers to different-sized meters in the interest of encouraging economic growth? Because if you get, and I don't even know how often a 10-inch meter occurs in real life, but--
Not often.
Okay.
So I'm going to let, I'm going to let John Gilarducci chime in on the policy issue you're raising. I want to clarify kind of the role of the flow factors. The role of the flow factors that we're using here to ratchet the SDC up and down by meter size is to help us identify the quantity of water being accessed and therefore the amount of production capacity required for each meter size. So if you, if you know that you're going to get, if you're not sure whether new development is just going to be a single 4-inch meter development or 5, 1 1/2 inch meters, you don't really care because those two combinations require the same amount of water production capacity. So those factors kind of make you indifferent to the actual meter size because they make sure that the right amount of money shows up. That's a, that's a technical issue. It doesn't really get at what you're asking, Commissioner, so I'm going to let, I'm going to let John take the policy side. And it's a, it's a great question. The first part of your question was, do we see, you know, different multipliers applied? You know, different structures, I guess you could call that, and we do. The second part of your question is where it gets more difficult, which was for economic-based reasons. And the one thing that we are held to in the ORS is a phrase called rate-making principles. And what that means to us is, and what that means to the industry, is any differentiators we create or, you know, we impose through the schedule, they have to have a cost basis. They have to have a demand or a cost basis. So in order to, in order to provide, let's say, a lower SDC for commercial development, we'd have to know that they're going to use less water than a similar customer with the same meter size. And, and the problem is, in order to create a rate, we have to be blind to who's on the other side of the meter. It's just all about what their potential demand is and having to meet that potential demand through your water system. So there is a way to do it. In order to encourage economic development or reward that type of development, you can buy down the system development charges for those customers, but you have to do it from outside of the SDC program. So that would mean, you know, a general fund subsidy or some type of subsidy from outside of the SDC fund in order to keep the program whole and keep that rate-making principle whole. I hope that makes sense. So that's, we are limited in what we can do, and we have to be very careful not to be perceived as being arbitrary in how we go about. And I know there would be a good philosophical reason for doing it, but it wouldn't be an appropriate SDC reason, I guess you could say. So I hope that answers your question.
Actually, it answered it perfectly. I'm just curious.
I like the idea.
It sounded the buy-down would occur from the municipality seeking to attract the business. It would be much like an offering of tax relief. But as far as the calculation itself, it is a cut-and-dry, plug-and-chug calculation based on volume.
It is. There, you know, there are, you can do a, for example, a fixture unit. There are different bases you could use, but meter size is, is well-accepted and is equitable. So, you know, some of these other approaches, I'm only, I'm only mentioning them because they tend to have different impacts on different types of customers. They might benefit some commercial customers in some cases and hurt them in others if you were to use a different basis. But this is a real good measure of potential demand and a real good fit for a water system. So it is pretty cut and dry.
Okay. I think you gave a very good explanation, and I wanted to talk about it from an economic development perspective. So it does put a tool in our tool. If we chose to, if we were approached by somebody, and I don't, again, I don't know at what point we enter into these larger diameter meters, but, you know, when you jump from half a million dollars in your cost to over a million, that could be prohibitive to a business relocating here. So that's a conversation where we're now aware that we have a tool we could potentially do. The question is, would we want to, much like tax relief? So I appreciate that explanation, sir. Thank you.
Which you'd have to have a general fund bucket to pull that from, and I don't think we have that. The only area we have those types of funds are like urban renewal--
Not yet.
Where we have a, not yet, but potentially that would be where you could see some type of--
And we could explore that. But, you know, we have an interest in attracting family wage jobs. I want to give Mr. Graham every tool at our disposal to do that. If that becomes, if he's engaged in conversation with a business that wants to relocate here, we didn't know all our options to provide that kind of attraction. So that's the reason for the question. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, do you have anything?
No.
One other, one other thing I wanted to mention, Commissioner O'Donnell, because you asked me about this, and I know we were trying to get some numbers today, but in the, on page four of the actual report on SDCs, we do have the Oregon City count. So for instance, we have one 10-inch meter in Oregon City. I can't tell you who that is, but we have one of those. So there is that count. That may be a little dated. I don't know if that got updated or not, but we, that hasn't changed, right, in a lot of years for Oregon City. So I just wanted to mention--
On page four of their report?
Of their report.
Okay. So make sure you went to the right page for us. Because what happens with this is that when you print it out, it comes, the numbers come, there's no page four.
It's page 37.
37, that's where I was going, yeah. I thought that was page four. Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, in your packet is a different page.
Yeah, it's got, yeah, I see you have one there.
Well, again, Mr. Gilarducci successfully answered my question and gave us a potential solution if we're ever faced with that option. Thank you.
My only comment was that Commissioner O'Donnell stole my question.
He did.
He's laughing. My question was going to be very similar, but not as detailed as yours. I was going to say, how could we use a reduction in SDC charges as an economic development tool to attract business?
I should have let you go first with the Reader's Digest version.
Okay, so--
So he's answered that.
Yes.
Okay, good. So my concern is this doubling of the rate.
Across the board.
Just across the board could affect even our housing, you know, where we already are saying we have builders where housing is just not penciling. They can't create affordable housing, you know, or maybe it only pencils for more expensive houses and, so I'm concerned about us raising SDCs and it becoming just a higher barrier to, you know. I understand the housing market is a market that we don't really have any control over only via incentives or some type of program where we would have money to contribute. So that's my concern, and it just makes me question the 2019 capital improvement plan, which I believe this analysis is built on, you know, like how we cross our Ts and dotted our Is to make sure that everything that's listed there is truly warranted versus wish-list, pie-in-the-sky kind of desires. Because, you know, if there's, if there's any, and I know that it's an adopted and approved list, and so it would be a lot to change it, and I'm not necessarily going down that route, but I want to have a lot of comfort in these rates which are based on that list and what we're saying we need for our system, you know, to be able to accommodate for growth. Because there's a lot of people out there that would say, we don't want any growth, and, you know, I mean, there's that side of the equation, but just doing our due diligence would be a review of that 2019 CIP, and I assume you've done that. Do you have any comments on that?
I do. So, but in honor of Patty kind of taking this topic, I was, you want to answer that, Patty, or do you want me to answer that? Did we lose Patty?
Can you, no, I'm here, but I'm trying to use my headset. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, before we come back, that's something we've been working on. I heard that loud insert from the Commission. What we're working on is to try to break down and be able to tell the story of the capital improvement plan and where the money is needed. You know, to your question, are they have-to things or are they kind of wish-list things, right? So part of that is the age of the system. So we've been working really hard to try to update our GIS so that we can visually show the community and show you, right, where the aging system is and where the money is needed for those major maintenance, capital repairs. And then the other aspect is the growth. You know, we have growth that is happening right now, and although there, you know, I understand there's concerns about growth, it is happening, and we have to be ready to manage that. And we have major improvements that have to happen. That's why there's such a huge expense needed in the next five to seven years because of these reservoirs. They cost a lot to try to, you know, buy the property, build the reservoirs, and have the water available to serve the growth. So we're working to, you know, next time we come back to you, of course, this isn't the end of the discussion with SDCs, and we'll be coming back to you with rates. We will be telling the story of the capital improvement plan and better articulating where those have-tos are, where the money is going and why it's needed now rather than deferring it. And the only other thing I'd like to add is that, you know, the SDCs have not been updated. I mean, we've updated them annually based on, it's called the engineering news record, so some inflationary increases that have happened. But we really, the city has not updated the methodology since 2004, and I think it's catching up to us. So I know that, you know, it's doubling right now, but we have major improvements that we have to fund, and we need to find a way to do that. So that's all I have, John.
I guess I was just going to piggyback on that a little bit is, when you do see, you know, that large of a time gap in between master plans and updating SDCs relative to the CIP list, and especially for Oregon City, when we added three urban growth boundary areas with South End, Park Place, Beaver Creek, Thistle Creek, Hamlet area, or concept plan area, you know, those are significant numbers of new development that you look at over that planning horizon that I would imagine plays into those costs as well.
I guess, I'm just trying to understand, though, how the city of Milwaukee's SDC is 1,968 and ours is $10,000 more per unit, or even the city of Portland at 3,412. I mean--
They have nowhere to grow. So there's no CIP growth-related SDC cost. Milwaukee has nowhere to announce.
Okay.
Yeah. And Tony has offered. Go ahead, Doug.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, please.
No, go ahead. We couldn't hear you.
Okay. I, I just wanted, just to remind folks, I, I usually mentioned this, but did not. When you're looking at, at the comparisons, one of the, one of the things that, that hides more than it reveals is the fact that you don't know for each of the comparators, you don't know whether that SDC was implemented at its calculated charge. And so one of the easiest ways to reduce SDC for economic development or affordable housing or any other purposes is just to do, impose an SDC under the maximum calculated. You could do that too, but we don't know how many of the ones on our list actually implemented less than they were entitled to implement.
And I have one other thing. Oh, I'm sorry, John, can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm following up on Doug's comment because I had this discussion at another jurisdiction that I was at. And, and you have to realize that if there is a decision, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doug and John, about not implementing the full SDC rate, then we have to pick up that cost elsewhere. And so that's where it's either the rate pairs or some other form of funding. So just to be aware of that.
Well, I'll tell you right now, the rate pairs aren't going to pick it up. And I understand that, and that's a sensitive issue and there's a very difference between the water rate and the SDCs and how they're used. But it's a sensitive voter issue and I'm, I'm a resident, I'm not subsidizing new development. And I don't think anybody else wants to either.
Mr. McGrath?
Well, I think there are a number of, of questions in play and I, I thought the presentation was, was really good. I'm not an SDC geek, but you know, with some of this, I could become an SDC geek and learn, learn a little more.
Sorry.
Sorry. Doug says, that's okay. So there's a couple of things that piggyback on the question that you asked with more, with more specificity and more detail. So a second question I would have about economic development is that while I, I totally understand your comment, Commissioner O'Donnell, about Oregon City not becoming totally a bedroom community. I mean, we have, we have our neighbor across the bridge, which is basically a bedroom community without a lot of tax base and, and a lot of industry or even business there. So it, they suffer from the lack thereof. Oregon City, on the other hand, has the ability and has capacity to bring in some business and some industry that would help shoulder some of that burden across the, across the board. But what is missing is, again, we talked about possibly incentivizing for business, but we've got a whole category of housing, middle income housing, or what I call workforce housing, that we have to figure out a way to make it feasible and affordable for someone to come in and build that because in my mind, that is a needed type of housing in Oregon City that we don't have. It can take many forms, but I'm not sure that the single family residential continuing that over and over in Oregon is really the way to go. So the question comes back to during the time that I was on planning commission and we were looking at these master plans, the question that kept coming up over and over again is that number one, the master plans paint a very good picture, broad rosy picture, that we have the capacity to serve all of these areas. Well, in reality, I don't think that we do. We had lots of questions, I had lots of questions about our capacity, and therein lies the rub of your question and your comment, who pays? That is a very delicate balancing act that we have to somehow thread the needle on, and I hate to use the cliche, but that's basically what we're doing. At, at the risk of being controversial, we've adopted these plans and I supported the adoption of those plans, but again, we need to look at a way that's rational and logical about how we extend services. And is it first come, first served or anybody out there that comes there? Or do we look at a way that it's staged so it makes sense for our community, the residents that are here now, and it makes sense for the people that are coming in the future? And I don't totally have the answer to that and I, you and I had talked about what they were doing in Salem and they haven't gotten back to me yet, but I really think it's worth looking at how we stage this. This is, this is the crux. I, I had someone on my walk at Waterboard Park yesterday, asked me about why the water, water rates were going up. And I gave a very simple explanation of it's not only about, it's not necessarily about the rate going up, it's about how we take care of what we already have. This person happens to live in an area where the, the pipes and things in that particular zone of the city are the oldest and the most decrepit. I said, you know eventually your water line is going to need to be replaced. How do you think we are going to help pay for that? If the water rates are flat, your water line never, ever gets replaced until it's some major disaster and then it costs three times as much as if we went along incrementally to replace that particular system. There was no understanding of how the 3% increase that we have, and I know I'm mixing apples and oranges, but it relates back to what our community's perception is. They just look at their bill and say, oh, it's going up. They don't understand what the background is. So again, it gets back to that whole question of cost of growth, who pays and how are we going to deal with this? And I agree with you, Commissioner Lyle Smith, about looking at that number and having it double. You know, does it make? In the best of all possible worlds, it makes sense. Yes, we need to do this, but we've got to be in, we've got to be realistic. We have got to be real about it and we've got to be able to justify any increase to constituents, whether they live here or not, particularly people who are wanting to come in and develop or build. How do we make that case? And I, I don't have the answers. I'm not expecting any of you to have the answers. I'm just throwing that out there because that's what I, I wrote down a whole bunch of just like questions as I was reading through this. And then we don't necessarily have the answer today, but I'm just saying that is, that is kind of what I saw, which was a predication to your question, Mr. Lyle Smith.
Mr. Lewis?
Real quick, because we're short on time, the, our concept areas, as Tony mentioned, they're not easy areas to develop, very challenging areas. And because of that, infrastructure is expensive. And I would say nationally, internationally, how and the amount we invest in public infrastructure is nowhere near it needs, needs to be. And so when we take this hard look at individual projects, and I can tell you, we dug very deep trying to eliminate those, we either don't build them and wait for development to come. One of the problems with our, our concept areas is they're fractured pieces of land in the sense that they're small parcels. If we could get the stars to align and get all those parcels to come together, either have enough in the bank or bond for a, a major infrastructure project in those areas, it would be much more cost effective. I believe in the end, we would probably be able to charge a lower SDC, but that, that hasn't been our history and.
You're talking about getting nickel and dime, so.
Every project is more complicated because you're doing bit by piece, bit.
By bit.
Bit by bit. And maybe in the order you wouldn't necessarily choose to do them in. But there are examples of projects that have been kind of the, the backbone to how, I think of my neighborhood and off a South End road, there was, Rocky probably will remember this, they built a major pump station out there, a major forest maintenance. The city did that using SDCs. They hadn't, they'd collected enough to do that. And I think there was also a special SDC that went into that one. So there is some of those kind of things that could play out here, but it gets, you know, the more complicated it gets, the more problematic that is. So.
Here.
But we do need, you know, we want, obviously there's some, you know, opportunity to come back. We kind of want to get the SDC improvement process started and have the community conversation around it. We're just wanting to check in with you and we get, we get the doubling, I mean, we all, we all saw it. It's not like we wanted to bring that kind of a message. It was much easier to bring a message that says, oh, we only need an extra thousand a unit or something, right? And so when we saw that, we, we checked in with Doug and Wyatt and John and said, are you kidding me? Can you do something different here? And they said, no, we can't. So.
Well, it'd be interesting, since you mentioned that other cities have chosen not to implement the full rate, I can't imagine that that's not a question that's going to come back as to, you know, is that an alternative? And is there, you know, that we could consider that it's 1.5, you know, for the next five or 10 years and then we up, and then the plan is, and then it is planned to go up to the 2.1 or whatever in another five years. More of a phased approach.
John's got his hand up. I don't know if you saw that or not.
I do too.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. Yeah, I was, that was exactly what I was going to mention, that that might be a way to have it both ways. If, if you discount over a long period of time, you're foregoing a lot of revenue that then has to be picked up from the rate pairs. So I think a more commonly used approach is to phase over, you know, over a year or two, and we often hear that request from the home builders, you know, because it allows them to plan a little bit better and they don't incur a doubling of the charge in one, in one year. So that might be a way to step it up. The shorter a period of time, the better, obviously, because you're, you are losing revenue against those costs. But if you do that over a couple of years, you know, it, it will play out pretty well in the long run, usually.
Right. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I appreciate everything our presenters are doing. I realize we've moved away from the technical aspects of SDCs and moved into maybe the political and the economic aspects of it, but you know, in the end, it's always about funding sources. Where, where do you glean your funds from? And in the world of economic development, I hope Mr. Graham agrees with me, the trifecta of success is if I'm trying to attract a factory, I need a site for the factory, I need a trained workforce, which I can provide, working in tandem with Clackamas Community College, and I need affordable workforce housing. And you know, there was a campaign a while back, and I hate to use it, but one of the phrases was live here, work here. And that's a real benefit, that's a real attraction when you do not have to commute to some distant place to work. You not only solve that problem, you solve your traffic problems when you can walk to work or ride your bike to work or whatever. So I realize we've moved away from a lot of the technical aspects, but you have to look for other sources of funding, whether it be opportunity zones, you know, people that are willing to invest. So I'll leave it at that. It's been a great discussion. My thanks to the entire panel for everything they've said.
Hey, Mr. Parno, I believe you had your hand up a couple times.
Thank you, Chair President Lyle Smith. I really appreciate the commission's comments and I think, I think it's an important, I feel compelled to just kind of chime in a little bit because I think the staff is being really thoughtful and maybe it's, I don't think it's the time necessarily to walk on eggshells in regard to this topic because to be really concise, there was, there was no slowdown in home building in Oregon City prior to COVID. There might be some situations now, but, but the housing is going up. And I don't think, I think the costs that we're talking about are not prohibitive to continuing to build homes, but one of the concerns that the commission should make, make sure that they inquire of staff is, you know, as we're moving forward and you have people that own property and they can develop at their will, so they can, they can put in housing as much as they want. And when they do so, they're going to pay an SDC and it'll either be an arbitrarily low SDC or an appropriate, fully costed, fair SDC. And what the staff is presenting now is a fair SDC. And so I think that there's some questions around, you know, how can you support with low income housing? A lot of those things come up and those can be addressed in other ways that we talked about tonight a little bit. So I, I think it would be best for the commission to bifurcate the two because what might happen is if, if folks come in and they develop these certain new annexed areas and they come in at an arbitrarily low SDC that doesn't account for the full cost of, of maintaining, or I'm sorry, expanding our system, we're going to be in trouble with our system. So we start building houses and again, there's been no slowdown, but we start building the houses, there's going to come a time when John Lewis is going to stand before the commission and say, the existing main that serves all those areas is going to burst if we can't afford to upgrade it or upsize it and it's due to growth. And at that time, the commission will say, well, what revenue source do we have? And that's where the burden comes back on the existing taxpayers. So I wanted to say that as, as concisely as I could because I absolutely recognize the issue of, wow, that cost looks differential, but the truth of the matter is, I think City Manager Conkle hit it on the head, you know, Oregon City has growth capacities that other cities don't. Oregon City has topography that, you know, high raises and, and mountains and things that pipelines have to climb that other cities don't. And Oregon City has old pipelines that need to be replaced. And so I think the rate pairs existing, their funds should go to those pipelines that need to be replaced. But I just thank you for letting me comment because I didn't want the commission to run into a situation where later you'd be asking yourselves, well, oh gosh, why is our main going to break because we didn't collect enough SDCs? And that, I think the answer to that, that will allow you to address the multiple questions is you can implement an SDC and I wouldn't rec, I wouldn't propose phasing it in or delaying. I would say you put in an SDC and then if you run into questions with housing and so forth, then you can look for subsidy approaches related to that, if that's, if that's the desire you have. But there really is a system issue where you're going to need some funding in order to facilitate that growth. And if they don't pay for it, you're kind of doing a disservice for the citizens. So thank you for letting me mention that. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Parno. I agree with everything you just said.
I agree. Sounds good. Commissioner Smith, do you have anything? Okay. I think you have general consensus from everybody to move forward. I'm sure we will get public comment on this topic from plenty of people, so.
Thank you.
Thank you to the presenters.
All right, thank you. All right.
Forgive me for leaving the room. So out where my family lives, they are evacuating them, so I was just getting a call from home saying they're coming.
Yeah.
I know the feeling.
Oh, they're coming to your house.
Yes, yes. And I have.
It's a good thing to know about.
Yes, because I have a disaster in one room. I mean, a major disaster.
Rocky's got room if there's an overflow.
He doesn't have any electricity. He doesn't have any power.
I think I may have power, we'll see.
All right. Lots of stuff going on tonight, so.
Surprise.
The last item under discussion items is the I-205 tolling NEPA and alternatives analysis comment letter. Ms. Miss you, Ms. Webb?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and introduce it. So good evening. Thank you again for taking this topic. And by the way, thank you for transitioning there. I asked Dana how she'd feel about it and she was okay with it, but I appreciate that. And so, yes, this is about the Oregon Department of Transportation, I-205 toll project and the Associated National Environmental Policy Act or NEPA analysis. So Dana, our city engineer who drafted this letter is going to briefly overview the nine page letter. It's a long letter and I appreciate the fact that maybe all of you read, read through the letter, hopefully all of you have read through the letter. We're one letter of many. Other agencies are developing letters as well, but, and this is a big but, but we're talking about ODOT implementing tolling really at our front door, right? And so Dana's going to go through that. But anyway, she's got nine slides. She said she was going to be pretty quick and then was hopeful for some feedback on this from you, from tone of the letter to, you know, content to maybe even how you want the letter signed. So that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. So tonight's purpose is to provide staff with any additions, changes or comments on the draft tolling letter. The comment period officially began August 3rd and runs through September 16th. So we'll take your feedback tonight and finalize a letter for submittal. So the letter is organized kind of into three general concepts. The first one starts with our three principal concerns that we've heard between the, the presentations by ODOT and general feedback. The letter then talks about specific feedback to ODOT on their draft goals and objectives. And then kind of gets a little more technical and provides comments on their regional modeling to date and modeling moving forward. So kind of to walk through those, what we've gathered as the three principal concerns is clarification for the policy that all major highway improvements will be told and applied equitably to all major improvements. So I, essentially this idea that they aren't just going to toll I-205 between Stafford and, and Highway 213, but that tolling is a program they intend to implement within the entire state. Clarification that those revenues collected in the I-205 corridor will be used in the I-205 corridor. If, if Oregon City and the surrounding areas. will be used in the I-205 corridor. If, if Oregon City and the surrounding area is going to be subjected to those tolls, they should be to fix problems in that corridor, not used in other areas. And then the third principal concern is the negative and disproportionate impacts and burdens to Oregon City. So to kind of get in a little bit more detail about those impacts to Oregon City, um, I'm going to keep it super high level and just kind of talk through, you know, ODOT has done a good job of, um, kind of a sales pitch of the benefits of tolling, but what they haven't done is really taken that deeper dive into what happens to the adjacent cities, so specifically to Oregon City, and the diversion of the traffic off of 205, um, the safety implications on our local roadways, the lack of multimodal options, the impacts to Oregon City's economic growth, um, equity to our citizens who will be charged a toll to enter and leave their own city, health implications, air quality and climate change, and also land use impacts. Um, then the letter moves on to talk about the goals and objectives that ODOT has laid out for the tolling program. And again, those look at a very regional high level, and so they feel they meet those goals when they reduce congestion on I-205. And so really, what this letter talks about is, those regional benefits are great, but what are those local burdens that you put on to Oregon City and Gladstone and West Lynn? Um, and how does that impact the local areas? So not just a regional look at congestion. What are you doing locally to congestion? And so we've kind of provided some of those thoughts. And then again, closing is really the comments on the regional modeling. They've only looked at, um, into the year 2027. Essentially, that would be about the first year of tolling. So they aren't even looking at those long-term impacts to, um, to modeling. We've got a regional model that uses a 2040 year, and we're asking that they look at, what does that look like in 2040? Um, they've really only provided at this point, um, impacts to how many cars would divert off of 205 and the roadways they believe those cars would go to. They have not taken the next step, which is identifying, how many intersections do they fail in Oregon City? How many of our intersections will fail, and for how many hours per day will they fail? So we're asking for that. Um, and then we're also asking them to identify the projects that would mitigate that. If the goal is, you know, regional congestion management, but now we're creating local congestion, you know, how are we addressing that? Um, and then we've provided some feedback on alternatives. They should consider their no-build alternative as a six-lane I-205 freeway. It should not be based on a four-lane. Um, there's also a alternative that restricts the arch bridge to bicycle and pedestrian only, and so having a better understanding of what that means.
What?
In the report.
And then additionally, we're asking that the told area that's looked at, um, extend all the way from Stafford Road to north of the OR 212 interchange. So that would relieve the diversion and rerouting to get around the tolling. And then, you know, just so, so everyone knows, and those out watching, um, this, this letter tonight is, is the city's official response. Everyone has an ability to comment and, and provide their feedback individually. And so there's multiple ways to do that, um, at organdolling.org. So tonight, we'd like your feedback on the various aspects of the letter.
Um, Commissioner Smith?
Well, just to mention that last piece, and I've vented my frustration on this the last meeting, there's a website for Oregon tolling that's not the same as if you go to the Abernathy Bridge project. And if you go to the Abernathy Bridge project, there's no mention of tolling. So those have been completely separated, which to me is so not transparent. Um, there's nothing that you, you know, and that's clearly, I'm sure on purpose, um, but those things need to be intertwined, so that if someone goes to tolling, they understand that's part of this project. And if they go to the Abernathy Bridge, you know, expansion project, that they know that there's a tolling piece there. And right now, if you go to one or the other, you don't see that they're connected necessarily. Um, and I think that's a huge problem.
Um, Ms. Webb, so is, have, have they done the full NEPA analysis? Was this just a summary look at alternatives, and they have yet to do the deeper dive into the alternatives? Or is, I mean, we're essentially calling out their alternatives analysis and saying that they didn't do a good job at all. Um, so I'm just wondering, like, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes. So at this point, they've, um, identified five alternatives and are recommending two of them move forward.
Two move forward and to the more detailed NEPA.
Yes. And so essentially, this modeling ask, um, and we've been working together regionally with other partners, um, is really, we don't believe the two that you're putting forward are in the best interest of everyone.
Based on the modeling that they're doing. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, first, I want to compliment you on an incredible report. It, it, it addresses things point by point. And I'll go back to the last meeting, you know, there's five, the survey speaks for itself. The survey has five choices, every one of which results in a toll. There is no option.
There's no no-build.
There is no no-build option, and there is no option that says, well, we would toll only the new lanes that we would build. I mean, it is like, and I said it before, and I'll say, it's like trying to get your child to do something. When you can clean your room now, or you can clean your room later, but you're going to clean your room. There's nothing, it, it just makes me angry. And I tell you, that's why I subscribe to Home Rule, because the further you get from where you live, the less in touch you are with the impacts of the prop policies that you bring down upon those areas. So now that I've vended, I'll say this. Uh, your three principal concerns are spot on. The document you provided is professional in nature. It takes issue with just about everything that was put forward by the state. I, and, and their, the request to clarify, clarify is a, is too kind a word to use for me. And quite honestly, I'm not, I try to avoid lawsuits, but if we were ever to get in a lawsuit over this, your document would be central to that action. And I, I want to compliment you again. These people care not what happens to this city. And, uh, the economic impact in terms of what we're trying to do, it's devastating. And they're not listening, and they won't listen. And if I could throw out everybody that voted for this, I'd throw them out. So thank you for a job well done. And most of that is just venting, but this is ridiculous. Five choices, none of which are no-build options, none of which are you can pay for new lanes only. Thanks.
Commissioner McGrath?
Well, I'm going to take a little bit of a kindler, gentler approach to this than my fellow commissioner.
That's as good as I can get.
Um, I would like to say, in my heart of hearts, that I don't think the ODOT staff is being insensitive. I think they know very well-
They're directed.
-what the impacts of this could possibly be. And if I was West Lynn or Gladstone, I would be freaking out. And I'm glad we are as well, although I'm using freak out rather broadly. Um, as I told Mr. Lewis, I said, my biggest concern that I responded to in the survey was that, I said, if you don't solve the problem of diversion, you can pretty much kiss everything else goodbye. Uh, because I know what the diversion is that's happening right now. And, uh, you know, in, in a selfish way, I don't want to see my street end up becoming part of that diversion, which it already is, but not to the degree it would under this. But I think about all the streets. I think particularly about the, our adjoining communities, and how we are really in this together, and that the impacts that would happen to all of us as a result of less thorough investigation is going to be devastating, not only economic development-wise, but, um, basically livability. And I think the livability of this community, um, and our, and the other two adjoining communities outweigh, uh, us having to pay, you know, pay for. I, I, in, in the best of all possible worlds, I would probably not be against tolling, but they haven't answered 99.9% of all the questions that need to be resolved before that can happen. I mean, in concept, yes, it's a great concept, but I'm talking 5,000-foot level way up here. When you get down to reality, it doesn't work. Um, the only other thing that I would, I would suggest and recommend, um, I would, uh, not totally wordsmithing, but two things. So I would recommend that we change, um, director is just her title. I think Ms. Bizard is probably appropriate. I wouldn't call her direct, I mean, the direct, she's not like the ODOT director. That, that I might address as director. And then I would like to also recommend to my fellow commissioners, although we can't vote on this, since this was a staff-driven letter, I would like to see the city manager sign this. Um, it's clearly a staff letter. I mean, it's, it reads staff. I mean, I read it. I, 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 you know, I knew where it generally came from. I didn't know if it was Mr. Lewis or Ms. Webb, but I knew it was a combination of both and, and staff. So I, I support, um, in whatever way we can of moving this forward and, and making it very clear to our partners at the Oregon Department of Transportation that this is a really interesting concept, and it's a great idea, but you haven't done your homework. And until and when you do your homework and get the answers to these questions to the satisfaction of our three jurisdictions, um, this is just not going to happen. So that's my, that's my, um, comment.
Okay.
If I could chime in, I agree with that completely. I, I think it needs to be a staff letter. I don't care if it comes from Mr. Conkle. I don't care if it's a dual thing where it's submitted by Oregon City staff under Mr. Conkle's hand and approved by the entire Oregon City Commission, that they know that we stand united in this thing. Whatever you want to do in that realm.
Okay. Um, Ms. Webb, I only have a couple of comments. First, overall, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think, I think the tone of the letter is appropriate. Um, I think it's pointed, but it's professional. Um, the only section which I, I had to pause on was the health section, which is page three, uh, or page 20 of the packet, page three of the letter, page 20 of the packet. Um, and maybe it had the health title, and then it was health and social services. And what, what threw me off was that the first bullet was about the courthouse. And it, and just mentally, when I was reading through, I was like, but that doesn't have anything to do with health. And, and, and so I, it made me question, it made me question that paragraph. It's like, does it look like, like if I were being a devil's advocate, they could say, now they're just pulling at straws. They're just adding anything they could think of. So I, I felt like it lost its punch. And, and I see that now that you says it's, it's numerous health and social services, and the social services is where you're doing the courthouse. But just when I was reading it through, I, I want our message to be strong and stay strong. And so it, the section is titled health, so I would prefer to change the bullet and lead with the health bullet, and then put the, the, uh, Clackamas County courthouse one just a little bit lower in the bullet. Just because it made me pause, it made me question.
What about health and social services as the, as the title?
Or change the title to health and social services, however you want to do it. It was just when I read through it, that was, I was like, and then I, I did question. It's like, are they going to feel like we're just grasping at straws of coming up with negative thing, you know, to say about the project? So, um, I mean, I, I think they're, they're all, they're all, yes, impacts to our local communities. So I don't think we should take any of them out. That, that was just an area where I paused and stumbled on my reading. Um, overall, I think it's great. Like I said, I think the tone is good. Um, right now, you currently have the mayor as, um, signing, the mayor's not here tonight, so I'm sure he may have an opinion about, um, signing. I'm questioning Mr., um, all right, it's getting late. Commissioner O'Donnell, are you, are you suggesting that we remove the mayor and it only be the city manager?
It can either be the city manager and, and co-sign with the approval of the city commission.
The, the issue is that the letter is due before we have another meeting. And I was looking at, from the standpoint of expediency, of having the city manager sign it so we can get out the door where it needs to go. And we want to get it in sooner than later.
Yes. Time is of the essence.
Well, I'm, I'm confident that they could get the mayor's signature. I think, from a policy perspective and from a authority, my personal opinion is to have both. They should have at least the mayor's signature and, and I agree, I would love to have the city manager's signature on it, too.
Could be issued under the, under the direction of the city commission as a whole.
Yeah, I had-
I don't care what the words are.
I had suggested that. It's just, the only reason I suggested is the whole tone of the letter is, it's clear that a layperson didn't write it. And, and we are basically the laypeople.
Sure. Um.
Well, with, it seems to me like we could add a statement with, you know, authority given by the city commission, Tony hereby submit.
I think that would be good.
Like at the beginning, on behalf of the City of Oregon City, with the full support of the Oregon City City Commission, I provide the following, you know, something like that.
That's perfect.
I think that would be great.
That's perfect. Thank you. Yes, that clarifies it and-
I think that would be well-received.
I think it would be as well.
And the united front has value.
Right.
It does. I think it, I agree. There's, there's a political side to this and a staff side to this.
Yeah. I did, I did find in the staff report, I, I like the fact that if we provide comment at this, that they have to respond, that they have to address our comments.
Yes.
We may not get an answer we like, but it at least, at least we've provided public comment that said, you know, you at least need to put it on record.
I think it also gives us some talking points as well with our constituency to say that we are, we have looked at this, our staff has looked at this. And, you know, again, inherently, in the best of all possible worlds, but when we're talking about the reality of what this could happen, it's not, it's not just about somebody going through and getting, having to pay a toll. There are so many more implications to this that we need to make our community understand that it's just beyond, it's going to come out of our pockets one way or the other, uh, either physically with money, health-wise, uh, economic development-wise. I mean, it hits a number of points that we need to make sure that our constituency understands that this is why we are having concerns about this.
This counter to our goal three, which is enhance the livability of the community. So I'm all for what we just said.
Sorry for the question.
Go ahead.
The piece, um, that we're asking voters in terms of using the park is this November, right?
No.
Is that going on the ballot?
The ODOT one already passed.
It already did.
The one, the next one will be for the sewer to go under.
I didn't know if that already happened.
Yeah, they're not.
I, I think it bothers me, too, that that piece was, you know, presented to us and put on the ballot to our, for our public before they even brought this topic up. Because that park was our leverage in, in a lot of ways here. Um, and that was very deliberate. And I think that's kind of a, a really slick move by the state to kind of bypass our voters on that. Um, that bothers me.
All right. I believe you have direction?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good job by everyone tonight.
Okay.
I know it wasn't easy to write.
Right.
Or was it?
It's a good letter. All right, uh, city manager.
I have no updates for tonight. Thank you.
All right, uh, commission committee reports. Commissioner O'Donnell with the Beaver Creek Employment Area.
Nothing further from me on that point.
Brownfield Grant Committee is Mayor Dan Holliday is not here. Um, CIC, CIC did not meet because it was Labor Day yesterday. Um, I don't have an update on that. Uh, Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, um, I am the alternate, um, on that committee. Um, I can say that, uh, the C4, uh, Coordinating Committee had a meeting last week. They received a presentation, um, from Ethan Stuckmeyer from, uh, DLCD about the new housing rules, uh, that, when the rulemaking that DLCD is doing, that's the Department of Land Conservation Development, to implement the new housing requirements across the state. So, um, it, those new rules affect all of the cities in the metro area, including Oregon City. So that was an update, uh, presentation that the cities were given. Um, Clackamas Heritage Partners?
Don't have a report, and South Fork didn't meet either.
Okay. Downtown Oregon City Association?
Um, as you are aware, at the last meeting, they made a presentation giving an update on their progress to date. And, uh, my understanding is that we have received an invoice. Is that correct, Mr. Graham? So we will be getting that check out soon. Soon, I hope, sooner than later. Um, we, uh, we had a board meeting recently, and, uh, the updates are, people are moving forward with the parklets. Um, I have only seen one constructed, but I think two are in process of, of, they've gotten their permits, and so they should be underway. Uh, the other thing is, is that the, um, Citizens Bank on the hilltop is having some sort of contest for- Citizens Bank on the hilltop is having some sort of contest for nonprofits and the downtown association is entering that contest. The other news is that the top for the kiosk has arrived and I got a picture of it this afternoon on my phone. So I'm looking forward to seeing it in person. And we don't have our meeting until, it's in two more weeks.
Okay. Metro Policy Advisory Committee or IMPAC, I'm on that committee. They have not met. They, they've changed their meeting schedule due to COVID and they're only meeting about quarterly. So no report there. Well, Lamont Falls Locks Commission is Mayor Dan Holliday.
And they did just have a meeting. Did anybody from the city go? Or went?
Do you want to come up? Is there anything to report? You can say, no, there's nothing new. Okay. That was Ms. Turway in the audience that we were talking to for the record. South Fork Water Board?
Didn't meet.
Did not meet. Well, Lamont Falls and Landings Heritage Area?
Well, they are, we meet next week and the last meeting we had was just before our previous meeting is they're trying to deal with the fallout of not having the management agreement approved for the cultural center. That's supposed to be in Old City Hall. And unfortunately, I believe that's gotten caught up in some politics and I don't think we want to, I don't think I want to know anymore about at the moment.
Okay. Well, Lamont Falls Legacy Project Liaisons. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Number of those meetings have been canceled. There's a meeting scheduled for the future, but nothing new to report this time.
Okay. Any final communications?
We have a, the committee that I sit on, Metro South Advisory Committee with regard to the transfer station. We had a meeting last week at the same time. We had our urban renewal interviews, but I watched the video. So they're still in the ramp-up stage, getting everybody up to speed on, you know, what Metro does, what the Metro recycling facility in there does, what, what happens with the solid waste, where all the stuff goes, bringing everybody up to speed. And we have another meeting next week.
Okay. All right. I think that's it. So we are adjourned.
Thank you.